This meeting was come to order. Approval of the minutes. You're welcome, I'm sorry.
Here.
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 Okay, we have approval of the minutes. Mr. Motion?
So moved?
Support, moved and supported. Any questions? Okay, hearing none. We can go on to the next. Citizen participation?
We have to approve.
Approve. Have to approve the agenda? Sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Uh, citizen participation? Any verbal communications?
We're two written.
Uh, WCCHEA?
Hi.
Dr. Kissel.
Thank you. It's nice to hear. I will be briefed today as one of the few faculty, WCC faculty, working with the iron workers this week. I just wanted to extend a hearty thanks to Media Services, Conference Services, and all the facilities folks, really, all of their efforts to keep us going this week, and we are off to a great start. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any public? Okay, um, any written? That was sent. Okay, special reports, WTMC update, Vice President Blakey and Dean Colbert.
So, uh, this is my opportunity to come in front of the board and kind of reflect out on our school year and give you some information about WTMC. So first of all, we had a great enrollment year. We were taking in 210 new students. We had 469 applicants. Those applicants are put into a lottery, and those students are then pulled from that. It's completely random. One of the things that the board has asked me is where are those students coming from? Over 50% of those students are still coming from zip codes in the Ypsilanti, Lincoln, and Old Willow Run School Districts. And this is the makeup of the students who are coming in. I think it's good to understand the story of our students, because when you look at the results, four or five years down the road, this is not the makeup of the students. So 17% are reading below Level 3. So these are students that would typically be referred to wash now literacy. 44% of our students, so if we say, coming in as a ninth grader, you should be able to do Algebra 1. We're taking in 109th graders next year, 70 traditional 10th graders, and 36 11th graders. So that makes up this cohort. 44% of those students were not ready to do Algebra 1, and another 12% of those students are not ready to do pre-algebra. So we have to put them into, basically, a numeracy course to get up their knowledge of fractions, multiplication, double-digit addition.
Are you saying 44% of the entering s- is that the ninth, 10th, and 11th graders?
Yep. So we retest them all. We give them a test that we made up to make sure that what their transcript says actually reflects them as a learner. Transcripts are not a great way to measure what students actually know.
Is the 44% not prepared for Algebra 1? Is it an additional 12% not prepared for pre-algebra?
Yep.
So 56% are not ready for?
Yep, so over 50% of our entering students aren't what we would traditionally say is grade-level in math. 12% are, sorry, 10% are special ed students, so that's pretty typical. We really make up the county average. Over 50% self-identify as first-generation college students. Now, again, that's self-identifying, so we're not sure if that's a real number, but that's still pretty high. And 14% are currently receiving free and reduced eligibility.
My question is, of the special ed students, do they have tutors with them, or how are they accommodated for their, their special needs?
It's, it's a variety. We, we've kind of become a school where a lot of students on the spectrum come. We have other students who need extra support. We, we have 1.6% teaching consultants, so we share a teacher consultant with the WISD, and then we have a full-time teaching consultant that works with those students.
What's your reaction to 50% of your students being first-generation college students?
We would, we want to maintain that. I mean, really, middle colleges-
Is that high or low, or?
We want even more.
Sure.
So, we're really designed, this is the kind of work that middle colleges are designed for, to really help transition, teaching the language, college understanding, and to successfully transition them into college. So, we hope that, and we want to maintain that, and that's been one of our goals. So, the other thing that's really unique about WTMC is we don't control the students who come to us. So these 210 students come from 98 different educational experiences before they land on our doorstep. And, and that makes the work that we do pretty unique, because we're not sure what they know, where they get, where their gaps are, and so that's what our incoming student class looks like. The other thing is, we're still at about 40% of our budget going to WCC in a number of ways. So it goes to WCC in tuition, through our chartering, that 3% for our rental and support fees, and for books. So that's $1.8 million this year. Next year, it will be closer to $2 million of our budget. Now, I also want to reflect on how our students make up WTMC, what is the percentage of them, and then talk about the results of our kids, and that's the best part, the result. So this year, we're 2.5% of all credit-earning students. That's up from 2% from the year before, and I think next year, we'll be closer to 3% of all the students. The interesting thing, since I've been here nine years ago, we made up about 80% of all dual-enrolled students. Our school has doubled in size, and now we only make up 42% of dual-enrolled students. So that's just kind of the movement, is dual-enrolled students. But our 2.5% students make up 4.8% of all credits taken at WCC. But this is pretty cool stuff. So that 2.5% is actually, last year was 2.1%. They completed 70, 7.3% of all certificates, and 8.9% of all associate degrees. So they're kind of outpacing the rest of the cohort in completion of degrees. And there are certain areas where they really represent a large part. So in general math and science, they're 44% of all associate degree earned, 20% of the liberal arts transfer degrees, 11% of the occupational studies, and these are all associate, 11% of the MTAs, and 47% of the healthcare foundation certificates. By kind of division, you can see 5% in advanced technology, public service, 6% in business and computer technologies, 7% in health sciences, 10% of humanities, and 20% in the math, science, and engineering. So a lot of our students are, are going into those type of degree fields. But I think the biggest thing is their success rate and what they've accomplished. So our students, when they take WCC courses, 97% of them get a C or above in those courses. That compares to the general population, which is 76%. The next one is something I'm incredibly proud of, because one of the biggest concerns I had nine years ago when I came to WTMC was we were retaining only 65% of our students who started the program. So we were taking in 140 to 150 students, and only about 80 to 85% of them are finishing the program. Our retention of students moving through the program is now 98%. So we've really been able to take students, anyone who arrives, as long as they stick it out, we're gonna get them through. 85% of our graduates this year completed an associate degree.
Yes.
I'm wondering, that's something we're looking at for the whole college, and I'm wondering if, not tonight, but at some point, if you might, with a memo or presentation, give us a sense of your strategy for achieving that 98% retention rate? And if we could see things that we could learn from you and make it college-wide, potentially?
Sure.
That's, not tonight, but something I'm very interested in.
Okay, yep. And the other thing is, a lot of our students are getting into pretty highly selective colleges. This year, we had over 10% of our students got into U of M Ann Arbor. We had a student receive a full ride to the University of Virginia. We had another student get into Brown, another student get into Cornell, two students get into Stanford, and probably the most competitive, you may not know this, but we had a student get into the USC Film School, which is one of the most competitive schools for a student to get into. So our students have accomplished great things this year. You know, I think our biggest accolades for us is we take students from all levels and backgrounds, and we create a successful educational experience, and I think that's what's earned us a lot of accolades, both locally and at the state level, and also nationally. So, name one of the best high schools in America by Newsweek. From the state of Michigan, we're a high-performing and a beating-the-odds school. And name one of the top 10 high schools in Michigan this year in preparing students for college readiness. So, and that's based on our overall SAT scores. And we were one of only two schools that are not magnet schools, that were in the top 10. So, thanks, if you have any questions, and we appreciate the contributions you make to our school.
Any further questions?
Isn't completing a program or a part of their graduation requirement?
Yep.
So that accounts for the high number of completions of certain programs in certain areas?
Yep, yep. So they, as a middle college by state law, they have to finish something beyond high school.
Right.
So they have to finish a certificate or an associate degree to get their high school diploma.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
Well, I don't know about the rest, but I'm gonna give you applause. Thank you so much, Carl. Next, Dr. Julie Morrison, accreditation update.
Good evening. Every summer, we come and give you a brief update on the world of accreditation, and here at the institution, and also accreditation for our program areas. So we're glad to be here tonight to do that. First, we'll give you a little bit of background on accreditation, an accreditation refresher, so to speak, and then give you an update on accreditation activity over the last year, and some updates for going into '17, '18, both for the institution and also for specialized and programmatic accreditation areas. So as a reminder, accreditation is a voluntary process that we undergo meant to ensure quality, and that's true both for the institution, for institutional accreditation, and for our programs and specialized accreditations. The Higher Learning Commission, HLC, is our institutional accreditor. It is the largest of the six regional accreditors in the United States. It is a gateway organization, which means that HLC is the organization that assures quality, that enables us to be eligible for Title IV financial aid funds. And that's true of all the, the large regional creditors. We currently have 12 specialized accreditations at the college. That includes the Childcare Center, as well as some academic program areas. And it is also true that those frequently require the accreditors to serve as gatekeepers for their program areas to provide certification for their students who are seeking jobs in those areas. And in all cases, the accreditations rely a lot on peer review. They're built on peer review to establish quality control. As I said, our institutional accreditor, HLC, is a big part of our lives here at the college. We are on a 10-year accreditation cycle with HLC, as we have been for a very long time. We're on something called the Open Pathway, and there are two elements to that, and we've been overcome with this before, so some of this shouldn't sound too new. Those two elements are assurance and quality improvement. There are two separate processes that are both part of the 10-year cycle. But there's also an ongoing relationship. HLC touches us many times throughout the course of a year, and many times throughout that 10-year cycle. So it's not once every 10 years. We talk with them pretty frequently. The first part, assurance, consists of three elements. There's an assurance argument that is required during 10 years, it's required twice. Our next requirement will be in 2019, 20. And this is a brief written argument demonstrating compliance with the HLC criteria, and also federal requirements. We have to file a federal compliance report once every 10 years. There's also an evidence file that we're required to file. Both the assurance argument and the evidence file are completely electronic now, and the evidence file is filed strictly in compliance with the criteria. And finally, there's peer review with a brief visit in your 10. The second part, quality improvement, is a quality initiative. The institution can choose the initiative, it does, or it can choose from a menu of HLC options, and as you might recall, that's the route we took, and we became members of the HLC Assessment Academy, and I'll give you an update on that in just a few minutes. Our ongoing relationship consists of a lot of things. Every year, we do an annual institutional update. This is a fairly massive data reporting tool that institutions are required to complete every spring. Vice President Blakey and Vice President Johnson are very involved, and we submit information on both financial and non-financial indicators. When you hear Vice President Johnson talk about the CFI, the financial ratios, that's how, that's where they are reported to HLC, but that's just one small piece of what is reported to HLC every year. We report to HLC when we have a new or discontinued program, either for approval or notification. If we have substantive changes, we may need to seek approval from HLC or notify them. And sometimes, HLC requests additional reporting or other compliance acts, as they ask us to do. A reminder, here are five criteria for accreditation. We keep this in front of us as often as we can. Mission, integrity, ethical and responsible conduct. Teaching and learning, quality resources and support, so that's teaching and learning content and the support behind it. Teaching and learning evaluation and improvement, so that's really outcomes assessment of teaching and learning and evaluation. And then resources, planning, and institutional effectiveness. In addition to the criteria, each criterion has multiple core components and subcomponents attached to it, but these are the five criteria to which everything revolves at HLC. So here is the activity that's taken place in the last year or so, and some of the things that are going on now and into next year. The board approved two new programs and discontinued six academic programs within the last year. All of those were submitted to HLC for their approval. Any program that is Title IV eligible, or that we want to be Title IV eligible for financial aid, has to go through HLC first and then be submitted to the Department of Education. So there is a time element before a program can actually put in our catalog for students to enroll and receive financial aid. So the approval by the board is just the first step in the process. We completed the annual institutional update that I referred to earlier. This year, the HLC asked that we complete a couple of surveys, asking how we report certain data. One was about how we report graduation rates and completion. One was about how we report our student outcomes. We don't know yet how they're using that information, but we know we'll hear more on that soon. They're really interested in learning how institutions are using their data. I've been trained in the Pathways Technology System, which is the electronic system where we input our assurance information, and we've obviously been continuing to prepare for that assurance argument and evidence file. And we're going to be having a site visit before, between now and the end of the calendar year. We have three additional locations on our campus. They're designated that way by HLC and the federal government, and those are extension sites, Dexter, Brighton, and Heartland. And they've been designated that way by HLC for the last five years, and HLC requests within that amount of time that they come and do a site visit, kind of randomly selecting which ones they visit, and they selected those two sites, Dexter and Heartland, and will be here sometime between now and the end of December. The second part, quality initiative. So the Assessment Academy has been very busy over the last year. We've completed the first year of a four-year commitment to be part of the Assessment Academy. There's been a lot of faculty involvement. It's led by a faculty-heavy team. There's been a lot of faculty development through all of the end services in the last year. There has been a very detailed plan developed. One of the great advantages of being part of the Assessment Academy is you have access to experts that work with HLC, who really know outcome assessment and how to improve the processes and outcomes. And you also are part of a cohort and have access to what they are doing in their own plans with the Assessment Academy, so you can share, share experiences and best practices with other institutions that are going through this at the same time. Next year is designated as the year of program assessment. Last year, there were lots of gains on course assessment, as you heard from Michelle Gary, who's our assessment committee chair, just a couple months ago. So the Assessment Academy is really providing a vehicle for a lot of engagement, and will continue to do so over the next couple of years. A big part of the plan, too, was looking at general education assessment, including looking at the Michigan Transfer Agreement and how that might be a part of that. The final report for the academy will also serve as the final report for our quality initiative for HLC. Specialized accreditation activity. We have two new accreditations this year. One was for our surgical technology program, and for the first time ever, we've had a non-credit area, not counting the Childcare Center, be accredited, and that was Economic and Community Development. The division was accredited by IASIT, the International Association of Continuing Education and Training. And just like we do with HLC, the specialized accreditors also have ongoing work with our programs, and this year, both radiography and pharmacy technology had midterm reports that were done successfully with their creditors. And our departments are very involved and very responsive to working with their creditors and making sure they stay on top of it, because it's really critically important for our students, especially those seeking jobs in those areas. I'm happy to answer, any questions?
Any questions?
Did nursing receive their accreditation this year? And through the same process, or something different?
Yes, yes. They had, they, last year, last academic year, they had their re-accreditation.
And my other question is, we submit a great deal of information. How do we hear back? Do they give you a letter grade, or a comment, or a suggestion, or both, or?
For, for like a re-accreditation? For, for re-accreditation, you get a letter with, you know, sometimes consultative advice. It depends, it depends on the accreditor. You know, the specialized accreditors all do it differently. HLC, for a re-accreditation, or what they would call reaffirmation of accreditation, excuse me, you would get, you would get some consultative advice, and it, with HLC, with those criteria, you know, you have to meet all the core components under a criterion to meet the criterion, and you need to meet all the criteria. So there is something of a rubric that they follow. And all of the specialized accreditors, I would say, have standards and something similar in place where you have to meet standards, so it varies from-
And there's a response to-
Yeah, there's always a response, so, yeah.
One more question. We heard a great deal last year, the year before last, about faculty needing to upgrade their qualifications, and how is that, is that over? Is it finished? Is it done good? Where are we?
The, well, the requirement goes into effect from HLC's perspective in September of '17. I think our process is complete.
Complete and documented?
Yeah, and documented.
For full-time and adjuncts, or?
For full-time and adjunct, and faculty who are going back to school to retrain, are in the process of doing that, and-
It's been approved and are doing it, absolutely.
And as long as we can document that they're in a process, that will allow them more time.
Yeah, that's good. Thank you.
Any, yes?
In that economic and community development area, the non, one of the non-credit areas, what programs are being accredited, and what's the benefit of accreditation in that area?
I'm actually gonna ask-
Like, it's not Title IV, we don't-
No, no.
Title IV financial aid, but how does that benefit us?
I'm gonna ask Dr. Mueller to answer, 'cause she'll know, have more information than I have.
I'm sorry to have my back to you, sir.
Yeah, so with the asset accreditation, the importance of it is, is that, just like with HLC, that you're following certain standards of quality in terms of what you're providing to students, and the way that you develop training courses, and how you're delivering those for consistency and, and success. It is a standard that is used internationally, because there are a number of companies, not just from the United States, but other, companies from other places, that have overseas types of training that they want conducted, and having the certification allows them the assurance that we met a quality standard that they agreed upon in their country, or, you know, that we're providing a quality that meets that standard for that country. So that's what it is. Normally, when they come in and they do accreditation for us, they're looking at accrediting certain types of classes. And for our, for our sake, there are a number of classes that are in the workforce development area, and I think there is some in CE2, Shelley, where they're not-
Currently, they're workforce development classes.
Yeah. And so, obviously, being able to have those workforce development classes accredited, you know, allows us to be able to train with some assurance from the-
And those are, the students that come to those are not for credit students, but they're coming as part of a training, an enterprise, corporation, business, that wants their employees trained and we're providing the training for some certain tuition. Does accreditation help with grant applications in that area? Or is that something that would benefit us?
They haven't asked us for that, in terms of grant application on a non-credit class.
Right.
There are very few non-credit programs that are accredited in the country, at community colleges, because it's a lengthy process, and just like you go through with HLC, you know, it's a lot of work. And to be quite honest, there are a number of community colleges that just don't take the time, you know, to, to ensure the, the quality stuff related to that. It's a lot of work.
I'm just wondering what the benefit is to us as a college to go through all that investment of energy, and if it's built the credibility with businesses that send us employees and pay for the programs, if that's a benefit.
Absolutely, and it's a benefit to individuals taking our, our training classes, just like it would be for college credit, that we're meeting some standards.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Harriet Street update, that's Madeline Bernard. Diop? Diop, or Dayo?
Yours, Madeline Bernard.
I know. We just know you as Madeline Bernard.
How to pronounce her last name?
I know, Diop.
Diop, that's right.
I fought it, but I lost the fight.
But you get to keep, you did get to keep the first one, your last one.
I did get to keep the first one.
So it was a compromise.
I've been working for over 20 years.
I've been working for over 20 years. People know me by Bernard. They don't know me by Diop. I'll be like a completely different person. Anyways, so I'm Madeline Bernard Diop. I'm the Employment Services Manager at the Harriet Street Center. And I also, I run Harriet Street and also run the Employment Services Department at Michigan Works. So our overall goal at Harriet is to offer assistance to the local community with the end goal of helping them improve their lives through education and also employment. At Harriet Street, we have a pre-GED class for those people who don't score high enough on their pre-test. And we also partner with Adult Transitions GED Program to offer morning and evening sessions of their class. So Tuesdays, Wednesdays, Thursdays, we have GED in our building in the morning and also in the evening to accommodate those students that are working. Washtenaw Literacy has also, also has a tutoring program that meets in the afternoon. And they partner with Adult Transitions and also the Harriet Street Center. And we offer them space.
Excuse me, could you pin your microphone down? Is that better?
Yes. Whenever the computer labs aren't in use, and we have two of those in our center, then we open it up for the community so that they can use them for job search, do homework, anything else that they might need to help them with their education and employment goals. So our customers consist of current WCC students and amazingly enough, actually EMU students. And usually those EMU students are ones that started at WCC. They know about Harriet Street Center. They've used our center because it's great parking. And the staff is really helpful. And they progress to EMU. It's just down the street. And again, they use our labs for homework assistance and that type of thing, or to do their homework. Sometimes ask us for assistance. Not always. Can we give it to them? We have other services such as computer labs, faxing, copying, assistance with applying to WCC, and filling out a financial aid forms. And in 2016, we offered 1,560 of those services to the community. Since 2013, we've had the Jobseeker's Contract to perform the employment services-related task at Michigan Works. Originally, we ran the employment services for all of Washtenaw County. And in July of 2016, we've expanded that now to Jackson, Hillsdale, and Lenaway Counties. We have one coordinator that oversees that program. We have three FTEs in Washtenaw and in Jackson Counties, one in Hillsdale, and one and a half in Lenaway. Yes.
I've got a question on that. The, are we receiving, is that something that WCC pays for out of our budget? Or does it come out of Michigan State budget?
It comes out of the Fed budget, who then they funnel it to the states, who funnels it down to the Michigan Works Southeast, who then awards it to WCC.
And then we manage all of those counties?
Employment Services portion, yep.
Employment Services.
Yep. There's different departments within each Washtenaw, Michigan Works office, Employment Services being one of those. And that has to be done by what's considered merit staff. And WCC is considered to have merit staff, which is why we're able to run those services.
The reason I ask, as we look at federal funding and where federal funding is going to institutions of higher learning, some of these counties are outside of our representative's district. And I'm wondering if there is some sort of statistical content that we could bring out of what the services we're providing in Jackson and Hillsdale, particularly, and Lenaway for that matter, the information that we could put on the table with our, with congressional reps from those areas to suggest that federal funding that's going to higher education has many benefits in terms of employment opportunities and job seeking. So, but what I'm looking for is ways that we can make the case for the federal government to continue providing resources.
I agree.
We're going to talk about, a little bit more about the numbers and what that looks like.
Madeline?
Yeah.
It's me. Go ahead. I do want to ask another question. The combination of the counties together, is this, was this a mandate through the state or the Michigan Works itself? Which is part of the state?
This, we are part of Region 9. And so that kind of was a mandate from the state that we would create all these regions within the state of Michigan. And so within that, there were some conversations with those, with five counties. I didn't include Livingston County in there because we don't do employment services there. That's outsourced to another provider. But within that, we, it was almost like a mandate that they combine all of those counties together and they run the Michigan Works Department out of those counties.
Okay. Then, I'd just like to piggyback a little bit on what Trustee DeBarty was saying. Do we get any extra funds for doing that in those counties?
We get, there's an administrative portion out of this amount. So this, in November of last year, we secured a three-year contract. And so from January 1st, 2017 until June of 2018, that contract's an amount of 1.2 million. A big portion of that is salary and fringe benefits, of course. The next biggest pot is the admin cost. And then there's some money in there for traveling because we have to travel to our four counties now and some professional development.
Okay.
But a big chunk of that money is for salaries, fringe, and admin.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Did I answer your questions?
Yes.
So we assist people with applying for unemployment, registering for work, job search. We conduct workshops and respond to any community-related needs. For example, if a company shuts down or they need to lay off their employees, they will call us. We go in, talk to the employees about what their next steps are and help them through that unemployment process to kind of help ease that burden. For example, if Whitmore Lake called us and said, "We need you to, we want to have a workshop in our library. Can you do that for us?" Then we would take our content and our material to them. It's difficult, I think, for Michigan Works sometimes because they're concentrated in one city and one area for everyone within the counties to actually get to that one centralized location. So every once in a while, we will go out to other sites and do workshops. To give you an example of the magnitude of the amount of people that we assist, every single person who needs to apply for unemployment benefits has to see one of our staff. Every single person. No ifs, ands, or buts. You will not get your benefits unless you see one of us. You have to register to work and we assist you with that. Everyone who's looking for work in those counties actually sees one of our staff folks. If you've got a new job and you don't know how to do the employment paperwork, we assist you with that. So in 2016, we assisted 9,898 people in those four counties. Keep in mind, though, that this is an unduplicated number. It's very possible that we saw some of these people, two, three, four, five, 20 times throughout the year. Okay? So this is the breakdown by county. Washtenaw is our biggest county. So we had, we saw 6,131 individual people last year. The Lenaway, Jackson, Hillsdale County, we only pulled numbers from July 1 through December because that's when we actually had that contract. So we're just counting those people that our folks saw during that time period. As you can see, Jackson is our next highest county, followed by Lenaway and Hillsdale County. So I always like to include kudos at the end. We pride ourselves in offering, actually hiring and retaining the best staff. A big portion of that is because not only do we need people who know what they're doing and can get the work done, but we need people that can empathize with the folks that we see every day. It's not uncommon that we get someone that is laid off and unemployed after working for 28 years, two years away from retirement, and they're homeless almost. So I always like to talk about the good stuff that my staff does because they really are good at what they do. Any questions? Yes.
How many, what is, how many staff are you managing? Including the Lenaway and Jackson?
Three, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11. 11 on any given day, not including work-study students and not including youth that we actually employ through Michigan Works so that we can give them some job experience.
Okay. Good. That's right. Thank you.
And those are full-time staff?
They're not all full-time. Of that number, two of them are part-time.
Are the students, are they summer youth?
Sometimes we employ some summer youth students. We don't have any this summer, but sometimes we do. Any other questions?
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Park Ridge. Anthony Williamson.
Good evening. Excuse me. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm Anthony Williamson. I'm the Community Development Manager at Park Ridge Community Center, Washtenaw Community College at Park Ridge. And I want to talk about something that's near and dear to my heart, Park Ridge Community Center. As you guys, as most of you are aware, Park Ridge is not. Park Ridge is most known for its programming for youth K through 12. Our most known program is our after-school program, which provides free programming for children K-12. We have annual registration of 125 youth and a daily average attendance of 40 youth aged 5 to 12 and 25 teenagers aged 13 to 18. Our most popular program for youth is our Summer Camp. Summer Camp, which is, which is going on right now, is a seven-week program which provides academic and enrichment activities for kids between the ages of five and 12 years old. It's a low-cost program that has scholarships available from a variety of our partners. We usually have 100 participants yearly. We currently have 91 campuses registered with about 50% living in the community and 50% living outside of the community. One of our other programs is our Saturday Academy, where groups from outside of the community, including the Delta Sorority and the CAPR fraternity, provide learning activities for teenagers in areas of leadership, team-building, and self-esteem. One of the other things I want to mention about, which is most popular about our Saturday Academy, is our Girls Exposure, our Girls Group. Our Girls Group is a program that's been going on for about 15 years. And what we do at Girls Group is we provide leadership, college readiness, and other programming for teenage girls between the ages of 12 and 18. And that ends with an exposure trip to somewhere within a four-hour radius. It's generally Chicago, whether it could be Cleveland or Cincinnati. In recent years, we've used a Megabus because our Washtenaw Community College van isn't as comfortable as it used to be. So we use other methods to get there. And we also want our young people to be exposed to different avenues of transportation. So we, this past year, we stayed near the, no, not Midway Airport, the other airport, Goheer Airport. We used transportation, public transportation. When Dr. Paley was here years ago, he suggested that we have the kids have an experience like Chicago. And so don't stay downtown and walk everywhere. Use public transportation and we do that.
About how many youth, how many girls?
This year, we took 10 girls. It's usually about 15 to 18 who attend, but there's some attendance requirements that kids have to meet in order to go on the field trip.
Okay.
Additional programs that we have at Park Ridge are discounted WCC open enrollment classes, which include zumba, sewing, guitar, and piano. We also have started an English-as-a-second language program in partnership with Ann Arbor Public Schools, where we have about 36 non-English-speaking participants who represent, I believe, about 17 different countries. And that's a daytime program, which has allowed us to have more activities going on during the day since most of our programs are after-school.
What are the largest of the non-English-speaking groups that you work with?
So I don't know directly because I just kind of oversee the center. I know it's a large group from Cameroon, but I don't know all.
Cameroon?
Cameroon, yes, yes. And what's happening in the area, are you familiar with the South Side of Gateway Community? It's kind of in transition. So one of the subsidized housing units over there primarily has a large Muslim resident, a large percentage of Muslim residents that predominantly live in a whole complex, which was African-American, say, 10, 15 years ago. And a lot of ladies come there to learn English. They also help us with our garden. We also do a Park Ridge garden. We also do senior focus classes and other activities. Well, Park Ridge is especially noted for now is our community programming. Park Ridge is in the hub of five subsidized housing units. And we use the location to provide a meeting space for community groups. Some include the Heritage Park Neighborhood Association, Washtenaw County Association of Black Social Workers. And we recently started an association of African-American contractors for Washtenaw County. That particular program, oh, that particular group was developed because of all the new construction to the Ypsilanti public housing and the fact that a lot of minority subcontractors were not getting bids or even jobs. And so that group was started to help that, which has, which has improved the number of folks getting jobs and contracts, but I'm not quite sure to what percentage has improved. One of the things I want to share is we have a Park Ridge Monday Meeting. And the Monday Meeting was developed probably about six years ago, where I decided that, yes, we're going to be in Park Ridge. I have these wonderful ideas for Park Ridge, but they're my ideas. And so now that meeting is set up where we may have as many as 35 participants, nonprofits, students, superintendent from schools. The sheriff has attended once. But we have people, we have discussions about things that happen in and around Washtenaw County with a specific focus of things that happen in the Ypsilanti South Side area. That meeting is every Monday at 10:00 a.m. We've had members from WCC's Nursing Department, there's people from Student Services, and a variety of other departments at WCC that come and share their information as well. And then we do a lot of community engagement. We get our kids to be involved in programs that go on through the city. One is Ypsilanti Pride Day, which has recently been changed to Ypsilanti Pride Day. But it's a citywide cleanup. And we've, I've been personally participating in that since its inception. But every year, we get kids and community members to beautify the Park Ridge Center, cut the weeds, do some landscaping, plant flowers. We also have a Black History Month celebration that we've changed three years ago. Being in that community now for about 20 years, I've learned a lot about its rich heritage. And what we've decided to do as Black History Month is to talk about important, people who've made important contributions to the city of Ypsilanti. Those include a person who namesake us for Perry School and Rutherford Pool. And this year, we made a special dedication to the Ypsilanti Public Housing, which was developed in 1943 and was recently demolished and is being rebuilt. And it's two-thirds of the way complete. And I think that, something to add on is I think that when it becomes completely full, that's going to enhance our opportunity to have, increase our programming for not only youth, but also some of our adults. Because in the six to seven years that we've been there officially through, with partnership through the city of Ypsilanti, the public housing complex has never been full. It only had 30 families. And with this completed housing renovation, they should have 90 families, which hopefully would enhance what we do at Park Ridge. And so here's briefly some updates we'll have for, updates and changes for next year. One of the things that we are working on through our department is to come up with a tracking system. We have a lot of people who attend programming at Park Ridge Center, young people. And we haven't had a system that tracks them. So now we're going to find out what kids attend just for recreation, what kids take the tutoring class, what kids take the guitar or other enrichment classes, and hopefully find a way to track them all the way to enrollment at Washtenaw Community College. I just wanted to add that recently, I was informed that the city of Ypsilanti has, is going to continue to support a Park Ridge Community Center. And I believe that support will now be inclusive of the entire fiscal year. It was a calendar year contract, but now I think the latest discussion is there, trying to approve it to the end of the fiscal year. And besides that, we're doing some staff development. One of the things about Park Ridge is we use a lot of volunteers and students. And with that, we require a lot of training because it's their first time actually working with people in the community as well as young people. So we partner with some of our partnering agencies to go to training or have them do training and even receive some funding to have some staff development and managerial training for some of our first-time supervisors. Is it the?
That's great.
Questions?
Yes, questions? Go ahead. Wow, this is fabulous. It's wonderful. No, seriously, it is. All kidding aside.
No, seriously, it is, all kidding aside. And I want to add in the WTMC. Are any of the students that you see come through your Park Ridge Center are students that attend WTMC?
I have no way of tracking information, but I know personally of two students who actually went through WTMC, participated in our girls' group, and all of our program. Actually, she started when she was about 12 years old, and I think is currently a sophomore, will be a junior this year at Concordia, in the nursing department.
Oh, okay, okay. And you said you've been overseeing this center for six years?
We've had our contract with the city of Ypsilanti for six years. I started, I've been in the area since 2001. I was the coordinator at Harriet Street Center prior to coming to Park Ridge and saw a need with the closure of the Recreation Department for the city of Ypsilanti in 2003, and approached my superiors about how can we be more involved in what happens in the community and the relationship with the city was developed, and we've been growing ever since.
So, how do you, how are you able to attract the students and the families to come participate? Do you do a campus-wide dispersment of your information? Is it all through word of mouth? Do you tend the schools and speak? You know, how do you get your students to come in, your participants to come in?
Well, most is actually through word of mouth. But, we do have marketing material that we use and distribute to the schools and then within the community about our after-school program and our summer camps. But, it is actually through word of mouth. We do have a Park Ridge Facebook page that is starting to increase in likes, but mainly word of mouth.
Are the student, are you allowing the students or like your computer literate, most advanced students to take on that project of maintaining the Facebook page for your site?
Well, usually students. I'm also an MSW, and so, I probably supervise 15 to 20 interns each year, who are much more computer savvy than I am. So, depending on which year, we have students that, I know we have Facebook, we have all the other stuff. Yeah, all the other stuff.
All the social media.
Yeah, all the social media, yeah. Because I think Facebook is kind of outdated, but it's what I know about. But, we usually have a student do that. If not, my staff or myself, we update, put new pictures in, talk about what activities that we're having, share flyers and recruitment information. For example, the Summer 17, which someone referenced earlier, we have two Summer 17 employees working with us, and the way we got those two employees is that the parents who read our Facebook page did their process through Michigan, through Michigan Works, and asked if they can work at Park Ridge.
I don't want to dominate the questions, but I've got one more of those, okay?
Yeah, carry it on.
See, now you forget. I'm sorry. Never mind. I just, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. Oh, I forgot. Are there any challenges, specific challenges, that you see that you are working to overcome, maybe like with certain, with certain group, ethnic groups, or maybe community challenges that you're facing in terms of trying to get certain programs over the hump, or certain messages across to the community in terms of, you know, what you're trying to do to uplift whatever situation they're in?
Well, for me, the area is considered at risk for a lot of things, but what's most important to me is education. And so, we try to partner with the school district. We try to develop programs that are academic in nature, so we can let kids and adults know how important continuing education past high school is for their success. So, that's kind of been my driving force in doing everything, is how do we get people, and including our young people, to value higher education? It's the reason why I'm at Park Ridge. I don't know if I, when I was walking around East, well, Washington County's campus, the first and eastern campus that I envisioned going to Park Ridge and working there, but it provided an avenue, higher education provided me an avenue to make better decisions, to learn deadlines, to critically think of things that, you know, I can possibly do to help my community. And I think that when you get more people involved in education, you end up with better folks.
Yeah, that's true. Well, thank you. Yes.
That's all right.
Is the facility used in the evenings?
Yes, the facility is open from 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, and 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. on Saturdays. So, most of our, like the ESL classes, some of our senior focus classes happen in the morning, then the after-school program classes, and then some more senior focus, I'm sorry, not senior focus, enrichment classes happen in.
And then, is there an opportunity for community organizations to use this space for meeting space and other sorts of spaces?
Yes, and pretty much...
And that's something that would have to be scheduled through the main office there?
Well, it's scheduled through our office. We have one of our employees who's been there for a number of years, and she kind of handles that. Because when it's me, people see me all over the community and say, can I use Park Ridge? And I say, yeah. And you have 10, 15 people all there, so we have a person who handles that scheduling. And not only that, but we also allow it to be used by community residents for baby showers and things like that, too. So, we make sure that the building is being used a great deal.
I would just like to say from, I haven't been able to go this year to the Monday meetings, but those Monday meetings are the most impressive group of county officials and workers that I've ever seen. If you want to know what's going on in Washington County, go to the Monday meeting at 10 o'clock at Park Ridge. They're all there, and they're all concerned. And also, the summer camp is astonishing in terms of reading and academic focus, but also fun. When is the graduation?
Oh, that's what I was going to say next. The end of the camp celebration is August 18th. It's at 10:00 a.m. We try to do it from just 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., because it's challenging to keep 100 kids sitting in a space one hour.
But, they're marvelous. And if you go, bring a couple of handkerchiefs, because it's really quite touching. Thank you so much for your work.
I've got a, I've got a question, too. I didn't hear you say anything about like a breakfast or a lunch program. Do you have that for the students?
Yes, we do. During the after-school program, we partner with food galleries, and they provide healthy snacks, that could be carrot cake. They provide healthy snacks for our kids. But, also, in the last couple of years, Eastern Michigan has started a food rescue program, because students were concerned about the amount of food untouched being thrown in the trash. And so, every other week during the school year, full meals are brought to Park Ridge, where we heat and serve for our young people. And during the summer, we have, we participate in the federal government's free lunch program, so our campus get free breakfast and lunch.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I do know, when I worked with the county, that was one of my projects that I had to make sure that, first of all, I managed that summer youth program, but secondly, the food program over there at that time. So, that's why I said, I didn't hear that, so that's good to know.
Definitely do.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Anthony.
Thanks for having me.
Great report. Thank you. Okay, we're going to Muslim Reports, Personnel Matters, and that will be in turn VP Mahaly.
Yep, in front of you, you have a listing of those employees that were hired and resigned from the college in July. Again, a short list. We're still working on the listing that we provided to you last month, still about 20 positions that we have open, that we're running through the process, interviewing, and within the next two months, you'll see those efforts as they come across in the personnel recommendations.
Any questions? Yes.
I always do. I appreciate the notation of replacement. I really appreciate that. I didn't see anything for Jerry Barker. Is that a movement?
Jerry's a replacement.
Is a replacement?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. And are we managing to find minority candidates for these 20 positions? Is that, I know it's very difficult, I just wondered if...
And that's something that we watch.
Yeah.
We definitely watch, and we share with the supervisors at the time when, when we're sitting with the search committee, that we identify. Do I know offhand? No, don't know that offhand, but that's definitely something that we watch, especially the underutilized areas.
Okay, good. I also wanted to sort of say it ain't so, that Victor Liu is leaving. I mean, that just can't happen. He has done such a marvelous job, I don't know, just to thank him. And I'll just share a short story. In my basic writing class, I had my students go to the library and look around and find a spot and try to describe the spot where they were sitting. And one of my students wrote a piece about Dick Bailey, who owns the library, and how, and thanking him for letting us use his library. So, I shared that with Victor and so forth. But, he's done such a marvelous job with staff and technology and ease for students, so a big appreciation for him as well.
I echo that. I was in, I was shocked, because I guess from what I called to find out, was this a misprint or something? And to find out, last month was his last time at the board meeting, so I really missed the opportunity to tell him in person, thank you for your wonderful service.
And it's just like him to just sort of sneak off.
Fly away, didn't he? Slid away. And another thing, I want to tag on to trustee Hatcher. It is concerning for me, I know I keep bringing this up about minorities. I've had numerous, when I say numerous, a couple of people, let me put it that way, that have told me they've applied for positions, and they never heard, never, never got the job. And they have the qualifications, as far as I could tell. I don't know what the criteria is are. So, to me, this is really, it's a situation that I don't know how it can be rectified, but I think something needs to be done. Because people are asking, well, I've applied, and I'm not getting a response back, and I know I have the qualifications. So, this is something, for me, I would like to know, as a board member, and I've said this numerous years that I've been on this board, and I will keep beating this drum. I don't know what it is, and it needs to be done, but something's got to be done. I just said my words. Yes, trustee?
I move that we accept the personal recommendations. We have to accept these, right?
Yes, we do.
Yes. It's been moved and seconded. Olive favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay. It's been moved and seconded and approved. Okay. Going to the tab C, and it's 2017-18 Department Chair Appointments, and that will be Vice President Hearns.
So, you all have, and under tab C, the listing of Department Chair Appointments for 2017-18. Just a reminder, the department chairs are voted on annually by the faculty in each of the departments. They cover administrative oversight, scheduling, and most importantly, they manage our part-time faculty. And then, they're evaluated every year by the dean prior to the voting in their departments in April. So, you have the list of those appointments of that election for 2017-18.
Any questions? Yes.
Question. How many new faces are there, and how many are coming back for another appointment?
Oh, it's mostly people repeating appointments. Thank you. I was trying to save paper there. Let's see. Please help me. I want to say, under Arts and Sciences, we have one new...
Two for ATP.
Two for ATP, and then I'm going to speak for our newest dean. There is one new in Business and Computer Technologies. So, Ingrid Angerson is continuing over Digital Media Arts, but she, Madonna, Donna Worthman is replacing Jason Wethrow. So, we have some changes there. And then, under Health Sciences, there are no changes.
I know I've said this before, and if you don't mind if I say it again, why, I know people they're voted in, but why is it that these same people are continually being department chairs? I mean, I don't get it. Yes.
What reason is it nobody wants to do it? As a department chair for 15 years, it's not a lot of fun. And once you learn how to do it, you get sort of stuck in it, because no one else wants to do it. The remuneration, I mean, I shouldn't say from my side of the table, but isn't that great? And you don't get to teach as much as you probably want to teach, and you get all the headaches. So, it's not a prized job, really. And so, the people who know how to do it and do it well are encouraged to keep doing it, and the real teachers would rather not. My question was, I mean, they're recommended by the departments, but the administration does have the right to say, no, I don't think so. Were these all approved by the departments, and nobody got pulled? You don't have to tell me names, just...
Administration does have the right to say, no, thank you. But, again, I think you said it most eloquently, it's not like a lot of faculty are raising their hand. So, even in these elections, to be honest, there aren't, you know, these are one or two people who ran, if one or two people ran. And I think that one of the things that does make the job challenging is, it's a job with responsibility and no authority, because they are managing and supporting their own colleagues. And so, that's, I think, a lot of times why you do see the repeat people stay as department chairs, year after year.
Suppose they say no?
Who? Well, you have to be, you have to, you're nominated by the department, and you can say, no, I don't want to do it.
Oh, you can't say, you can't say.
And then, the department comes up with somebody else.
Okay, so they will just go through the list of people, okay, are you interested?
Yeah, exactly.
Gotcha.
And many, I mean, the larger departments, it's a little more complicated, but most of the departments are small enough that we have conversations.
Like the culinary is small.
Yeah. There have been a few crews, but not very many.
Yeah.
I want to move, move the appointment of the 2017-2018 Faculty Department Chair Appointments as presented.
Support.
Move and support it?
I'd just like to add one more thing. This list of people are people who really care about their departments and their profession, so that they, they're willing to do this. If you're looking for a committed group of people, these are the ones, and I'll second the motion.
Okay, all right. Well, Olive favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, we will go to remarks of the Board of Trustees. Anyone have anything burning to discuss, to say? Yes, you, Eric.
I was just noticing, when she talked about EMU students coming to the YPSI Center, the Harriet Center, EMU students come to the English Department Writing Center, too, because ours is better than theirs. I just thought I'd throw that out there. They come to school here, they know they can get really good help, and they sneak back into the Writing Center upstairs. I was, I'm very impressed always to get the live, work, learn in the mail with all the offerings. And I just would like, perhaps in October, when we get other enrollment data, I'd really like to get enrollment data from the community, well, not so much the community enrichment, but that, as well as the workforce development, so we get a sense of enrollment and popular how it's going. I'd like to see that. Thank you. That's it.
That's good. Anyone else? I don't have anything else to say, so I will go to...
Oh, precedence remarks. I'm sorry.
Yes, I do have a few things, important things. First, I'd like to ask dean, I mean, Vice President Hearns, to please introduce our new Dean of Business, Eva Samulski? I say Smalski. Am I saying it wrong?
Smalski.
I say Smalski.
Yeah. So, Eva, would you please stand? Eva is the newest dean, and I'm very, 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 very happy that she has joined us. So, I'm feeling in the dean's position. She's been with us a week, maybe three or four days. And Eva comes to us from McComb Community College, where she served as Associate Dean of Business and Computer Technologies. So, she knows a lot about the areas that she's supporting. She's had some other administrative experience in higher ed, both at the College of Creative Studies, as well as Wayne State University. And I'm really happy to have her. Welcome.
Well, welcome. Yes, thank you.
She's joined our great team.
No, that's great. Wonderful.
Also, at this time, I'd like, we have, we found an archaeological find. And Julie, I would like you to tell us about it. It's kind of cool, where we are part of it.
So, it's something that I just learned about a few days ago, that's pretty cool. We had a study abroad trip, one of three that went this spring. We had a study abroad trip in the U.K. for a few weeks, second half of June, led by Christopher Barrett, who's a faculty in anthropology, and Ian Rush, who is a history faculty. And the bulk of their trip was spent at a place called the Bindalanga Center, which is an archaeological excavation site in Northumberland, near Hadrian's Wall. And while the students were there, they were part of the dig that uncovered, and I may not get this completely right... not get this completely right, but they unearthed a series of tablets from the Roman era. They were actually letters, that they're wood tablets that were letters. And they're part of an earlier dig found in 1992 that was one of the largest finds of this kind ever and incredibly rare. They never expected to find more of these. So it's an incredibly exciting find. And Ian, from right when he came back, sent me an article from The Guardian, which is, you know, the, the British newspaper, about the find, which doesn't mention our students, but they were there and they actually got off some of these tablets. And they've been interviewed by David Jesse of the Free Press, Detroit Free Press. So there will be an article about that, I think tomorrow is what they're predicting. And I don't know.
There's an update. Some of the editors have put it to this weekend, which is actually better because it's under circulation. Usually means a feature, so.
Yeah. It's hard to overstate how, what a rare find it was though. And they, they did not go there finding the dentistry and everything, so it's exciting. So it was a really great party.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah. I'd like to welcome the ironworkers to our campus for the eighth year. And we are really, there's 720, 720 participants this year, which is up from last year, which were around 600 and maybe 50. But, you know, it, it's a point of pride to have them here because we are really very appreciative and respectful of what they do for our country. And everywhere you look, you know, it's the work of an ironworker. And so it has been, it's great working with them and they're very pleased with everything that's been going on, on campus this year and so far. So if you see them, smile a lot. You know, welcome them because it's great to see that they're here. Let's see, just a few more things. We have a youth development mentoring program with MDOT, which is pretty significant. And this is going to be a career fair, 2017 career fair on our campus next Tuesday. And we're expecting about 250 young adults in grades 10th and 11th to be here. So that's exciting. And our next economic luncheon, don't forget, is September 14.
Fourteenth?
Yes.
I'd like to add something.
Yes.
I know that you and I bring up the minority hiring often. And it, it occurs to me that, and I've talked to Rose about this and Linda Blakely, that the GED students and the Park Ridge students and the students coming from this, this is, these are the, are the young people who we need to foster through the system. And some of them will want to be teachers and some of them, if we support them somehow through the system to get them, they might apply to be teachers at Washtenaw. It's a long-term solution, but it seems to me it's, the, the short-term one isn't working. So maybe the long-term of supporting minority students in Ypsilanti, in Washtenaw County, all the way through the system till they get a master's degree and teach here for a while. You never know. So that's just something I'd like to add.
That's a very good suggestion. As a manufacturer, if I can just add one thing, and then at some point, I know that you're going to hear more from our, from Vice President Hearns and Blakely and Clarence, Vice President Blakely, and Dean Clarence Jennings. You know, when we talked about the student success numbers, when WTMC came, and, you know, our first thought was, yeah, that's really good, you know, we have 12,000 students. And then all of a sudden it was like, well, wait a minute. If we broke them down into different cohorts, we could make a difference with all of those different cohorts. And so I think you'll find very, you'll find the different strategies that they are working on, which I don't even know all of them yet, but the different strategies that we're putting in place to really take a look at the populations. It's not like we're not looking at everybody, but you can't, you know, how to eat a bite of elephant one bite at a time. But by taking it and looking at the different cohorts and focusing on what we can do for them. And, and then scaling it up. So at least we'll be able to kind of do what you just talked about. So we can talk about that at another time.
Back to transportation for a minute. I know we're working on an office at Willa Run, so I wondered if you could update us on our work with the American Center for Mobility and Autonomous Vehicles and is there life in the program?
There is definitely life in the program. We, you know, our program advanced transportation here on the degree credit one, there's a lot of life in that program. What we're doing with the American Center for Mobility, that, they are in the planning stages, just as we are in the planning stages. So where we're at at this point is Larry, our Baffes, developed an MOU agreement, Memor of Understanding. And what we are planning on doing is taking that memorandum of understanding and sitting down with the other two presidents, as well as the American Center for Mobility, to discuss how we're going to work, how we're going to collaborate in delivering this training aspect.
Is that Dr. Ivory and the other president?
The other ones are Dr. Ivory Wright and President, President Ivory, President Sawyer and I. But this is the whole training piece and how we are going to work there. And then, of course, the American Center for Mobility is also working with research institutions. So they are looking at engaging all of them as well. So it's in progress. It seems like it takes, it's taking a lot longer, but it's, you know, we're, we're making progress. Damon is working on the office, so we should get that. When, Damon?
Well, early October, we'll have that office outfitted.
They are office suite up, so.
And a sign?
And a sign? We can do the sign.
We want signage.
Yeah, we do want signage. They gave us that little slip sign, but, you know, we're trying to get more than that. But I want to tell you, I, I have been asked to speak on Monday. And again, as I say over and over again, this isn't because it's Rose Blanca, I'm the president of this college, which people look at and recognize that we're becoming leaders in this area. And on Sunday, next, did I say Sunday? Next Monday, I'll be meeting with policymakers from Washington DC and, from Washington DC as well as executives from Ford Motor Company. And it all has to do with Detroit Tech Town. And my area of presentation is going to be on training and skills gap. And what's good about this is my, it says Washtenaw Community College. And when we're involved in those circles, it's a real, it's good PR to, to attract more people here to our jobs. And, you know, we do want to make sure our students get employment, significant employment in these areas and training. So that's the best I can give you right now.
That's good. Thank you.
Well, it's not like crazy, exciting sounding right now.
It's a nice sight day.
You know, it's like cleaning house and rebuilding.
Let's keep working.
Right.
Any questions? Anything else? Okay. All right. We're going to old business and that is tab D. This is an action item and this is the DEB, VAV and boilers replacement project, mechanical construction contract and Vice President Flowers.
Right. So we talked, we had a discussion about this a couple of months ago. What we need is consolidate the multiple deferred maintenance projects into one bid, which is why there's a lot of, a lot of companies you see in bid calculations and policy action items. We're asking the board to approve only the EB boiler replacement right now. We're holding off on the other portions of the boilers. Need to be done in the summer. Ideally, we want to do work that affects the winter and the summer and the work that affects the summer and the winter. So there's a timeline to get this done before winter sets in. So that's why we have it as an action item today.
Yes. Go ahead.
Why is Siemens Industries so much less than the other ones?
Because Siemens is only bidding controls. Just their controls, because they're not bidding the mechanical.
Okay. So, and is, are any of their controls involved in the other people's bids or?
I'm sorry?
Are, whose controls are what you're saying?
Siemens.
Are we definitely going to use those controls?
Yes. The campus is 80% Siemens control.
So really we're, we're doing both?
Just one.
Just boilers.
Just Boon and Dar, only.
And then where, are the controls separate from the?
Yes.
And that's going to be something that's done later?
It'll be done, it'll be done towards the end. It'll be done probably close to December before the controls.
Okay, but that's not something you're asking for approval?
That is correct. Only the board.
I have a question.
Yes.
So you know what a boiler is?
There are actually three.
Okay. So controls, are you talking about the actual controlling mechanisms, the digital cameras and all of that? That doesn't come with the boiler?
The controls for our, the controls for our head and controlling valves, controlling portions of the boilers from our central control system, which is in our power plant. So all of our devices have Siemens or most of our devices have Siemens controls. And there, there are a number of devices, there are literally hundreds of different devices, Siemens software and hardware control. And so once you install the devices, you have to be able to control those devices with a variety of different controls contractors. Johnson Controls is a company, Siemens, Honeywell, Ando, there are a number of controls contractors. And they specialize in just the actual controlled device from basically remote control of those devices.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I think we, we have to keep the new dean of business education warm this winter, so I can imagine.
Yes, go ahead.
I move that we approve a construction contract with John Dar Mechanical of Ann Arbor, not to exceed $360,000.
Is there support?
Support.
Alvin Fager?
It's Roach.
Oh, it's Roach. It's an action, it's Roach.
Chair Jane Warren?
Yes.
Vice Chair Warren?
Yes.
Yes.
Secretary Davis?
Yes.
Trustee Murray?
Yes.
Trustee Henson?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to tab E. This is a discussion and this was with Vice President Hearns.
So under tab E, you have actually two documents. One is the proposed document as well as an edited document. So you can see the edits that we're proposing to policy 3045, which is actually the college's general education requirements. The summary of the recommendation is that a team of us had started meeting about a year ago or last fall under the leadership of VPI Abernathy, who was VP at the time. And we did a lot of research around the state in regards to what other schools were doing in regards to the Michigan Transfer Agreement, which is the transfer agreement that combines the general education requirements that transfers courses to a four-year institution. We talked to faculty, we did a lot of surveys with our faculty, town hall meetings. And again, we met weekly to talk about, you know, what the implications of these changes would be to the college. And our final recommendation is that the college adopt Michigan, the Michigan Transfer Agreement as our general education requirements. And one of the biggest things for our students in regards to this adoption is that we're going to be helping more of our students complete a degree here or a certificate here at Washtenaw Community College before they transfer, if they're going to be transferring to a four-year institution. And so currently, our general education requirements have requirements that are not included in the Michigan Transfer Agreement. And so we have students who are leaving us before they complete a degree because we have additional requirements in our general education requirements. And so all those things are laid out here in regards to what those changes would look like for each of our, the degrees that we offer and how those things would be distributed across the degree requirements.
Any questions?
There's no mention in the blue, which is the new thing, right, of the MTA that this aligns? Is there, did I miss it?
Well, you know what? In, in the new policy, I'm looking, I'm looking, in the new policy, again, what we're laying out are the degree requirements, the courses that are requirement.
Right.
Not specifically the Michigan Transfer Agreement, because it is our general education requirement.
It is ours, right.
It's our general education requirement. And so MTA, if it changes or anything changes, I don't think we want to add that specifically to our board policy, but it is directly aligned to it.
And does this have a relationship then with assessment?
It, it wouldn't change assessment so much because our assessing of our general education requirements would still stay, stay the same in regards to English and writing and math and how we assess those general education requirements. Those things would not change. The biggest thing that would change is that we took things out that we would, of course, no longer assess.
So the critical thinking is out?
The critical thinking is out.
Yeah. And there's no reference whatsoever to global studies or minority education? There wasn't before, so I'm not criticizing the, the new one at all. So where would that come in terms of, of Washtenaw Community College policy?
So one of the things that did come up when we were doing, having this discussion specifically with one of the faculty members is concern about that global endorsement or some engagement of cultural experiences for our students. And so we are looking at that as something that we want to make sure our students have and looking at a global endorsement as part of our strategic plan. The other thing in the meantime is that the majority of our students who are transferring to Eastern do have that global requirement when they transfer to Eastern.
Right.
And on all of our articulation agreements with Eastern, we do recommend courses for our students to take here at Washtenaw Community College that meet those requirements at Eastern.
Does Michigan have the same sort of requirements?
I don't think University of Michigan, I don't think they have that requirement.
And I think, you know, I think it's most appropriate that we respond to Eastern, but I'm still missing some statement in the Washtenaw Community College general ed philosophy about global studies, minority issues, cultural issues that don't seem to be here. And it, it doesn't necessarily have to be a course, but it could be, I mean, critical thinking should be in all of this, you know? So not to say that there has to be, well, you get my point.
I do, I get your point. I get your point.
I do too. Yes, go ahead.
A couple of questions. So we're making this adjustment to come in line with the MTA requirements. But it's going to also apply to people that just want an associate degree from us and they're not considering transferring.
Absolutely.
So we're changing that requirement even for those students who don't want to take advantage of the MTA.
Correct. And so whoa, you know, and again, lots of discussion went into this. And for some, for our students who are in occupational programs, one of the big benefits is when they do decide to go back to school, they would have courses and credits that count. And in a lot of those occupational areas, students are going to be able to take more classes to build skills in those occupational areas without having to take requirements that were a part of our general education requirements. So our occupational faculty were, you know, in some instances where they were loading up on classes, maybe that they thought their students could be doing more hands-on work in those area, that is a big benefit for those programs.
Okay, well, my next question, I noticed we're going down in the requirement on writing and computer literacy. It looks like. We're reducing our, our credits required in those areas.
In computer literacy, correct. And again, the writing changes are what came out of the Michigan Transfer Agreement. That was a state agreement. So that wasn't, you know, some of these requirements, you know, we may not love, but they're not the requirements that the college came up with.
But, right. But it might be for some areas, we may want, some people who want and are working and trying to get an associate degree may be happier getting seven credits of writing and four credits of science.
So one of the things.
So what we're doing is we're increasing the requirements for science across the board for all our associates. for all our associate degree recipients. We're increasing how much science they take and decreasing our requirement for writing. Now, they can take more writing.
Correct.
But they're gonna be forced to take the science. And I wanted, my sense from talking to students that, in the area of fine arts, at some point, if they're, if they can't apply their financial aid to something that's towards completion credit, then they can't use financial aid for that classes. So my fear is somebody that wants to take writing and gets their three to four credits taken care of, and doesn't really care about the science, can no longer use their financial aid for writing. They, they can only use it for, if they take a, a science course.
They can take a second writing course. And one of the things that's important to remember about
But they can't use their financial aid?
Yes, they can. It's a part of the course.
It's all.
It's a part of the program. And one of the things that's important is that these changes do give the departments more flexibility in the requirements that make the most sense for their programs. So for example, in the business program or in a technical writing program, those programs are still gonna require speech, they're gonna still require those computer literacy courses in a direct way, even though, again, we have a ton of technology on campus, so our students are getting a lot of technology exposure. And again, that was something that we discussed. But the program requirements that go into a program are still gonna be dictated by the program. So it doesn't mean that all of these courses are not gonna be courses that students can take and use their financial aid, because it still will be in those programs.
A suggestion, since this is
Okay, well, I'm gonna support it. I just have questions about it.
No, that's, that's
But you guys have been working on this for a long time, and it's, I, I trust you. But that's, I'm just trying to
Good question.
Wrap my arms around, or my mind around, people that don't really wanna take science but wanna take humanities stuff.
So
That's why we're forcing them to take more science.
So, 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 you know, it's, it's obvious, the science requirement was something that the MTA committee thought was extremely important, and so there is that addition of science. I think that, that the question or concern that you have is gonna be addressed in the fact that faculty through their programs are evaluating what should be in their programs, and they do have more flexibility there. And it is requiring us to look at what programs that we do and don't have, that we might wanna have to support our students.
Yeah. Well, again, I'm gonna support it.
Okay. We're, we're still at the discussion piece right now.
Right.
Yes.
I was just, with regard, I'm still on the computer literacy and global education and diversity, and I'm just wondering if, I know you can't change the courses.
Correct.
And that's, that's been worked out, MTA is fine. But in your, in your narrative, when you talk about broad-based education and appreciation for the important modes of human thought, communication, and inquiry, you might mention those things as being important to Washnau Community College.
Absolutely.
That's a good idea.
I think that's
And it doesn't change the courses, but it does state somewhere
That we care about those things, which we do.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
That's a good, very good point.
In all courses, you know, whatever.
Very good point. Thank you. Is this a part of the student success initiative?
Absolutely, because again
That's what I thought. So we're really, I mean, you know, I, I do know that, but I wanted to bring it out from you, that this is a part of the student success initiative.
Persistence and completion.
And completion.
Absolutely. And again, I can't, I cannot, I mean, even though it sounds small, and it's, you know, not a big piece of the report here, when you look at that computer literacy requirement and that speech requirement for our students, like in the WTMC presentation, who are going in those heavy science areas, we are requiring currently, and it costs money for students to take those classes, to take extra credits. And so what a lot of students, our savvy students are doing is, they're leaving and they're going to Eastern before they actually complete here, and we don't want them to do that. We want them to finish, complete here, and then transfer to Eastern. So it is costing our students more, and it's kinda costing us our credit that we actually, you know, help those students get to, or that, you know, be successful.
I see.
You know, so right now, we're getting, especially from our advisors, we're hearing that, I mean, we're creating a hurdle currently for our own students.
Mm-hmm. Gotcha. But it's gonna be more worthwhile for them at the
In the long run, absolutely.
Right. Okay.
It'll be more worthwhile for us to, regardless of having completion.
Totally for us.
I just, I just worry a little tiny bit about the solution to completion and persistence is reducing the requirements.
That's only once.
It, it can happen that way. I mean, one way to get completion is to say you don't have to do it. So
I think one more point is that our students who are transferring, there's still so many, I mean, because we had a lot of discussion around this, there are still so many requirements at the four-year school that we depend on to help them get that whole global person and that experience. And then the students who are not transferring, we're allowing them to get more skills. And so I think that's kinda the important thing to stay focused on with, with this change.
Thank, well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Very detailed. We're going on to new business, and that is, again, this is a discussion. Proposed revisions to Policy 3045, general education philosophy, oh, that was you, sorry. IT Assessment Service Contract. Vice President Johnson.
If I may just begin this before Vice President Johnson takes the lead. So this IT assessment plan is something we've needed, and we, we really do wanna go in this direction. But you may recall that we had a few incidents with the campus outage for, you know, the several days. And one of our strategies that we wanted to put in place, because we did correct that and everything's fine, but we realized that we really need an assessment of the entire operation. Not because there are things aren't working well, but because we keep adding more equipment onto, for example, all the things that we just added in, in advanced transportation, the nursing program with the, with the, what do you call those bodies?
Simulators.
Thank you. With the simulators. I mean, all of this is, you know, it, it impacts our technology, and so our infrastructure. And so we thought what's really important in response to what occurred, all this at the same time, is that we really need an assessment. Not only an assessment about where we're at today, but where we'd like to go within the next three years. And the only reason I'm presenting this now, saying this intro, because Bill can do a great job explaining it better than I can, is, as you notice up there, it says discussion with possible action. And if you could just think about it, and we're not asking you to take action tonight, but if you could just think about it, because since we don't have a meeting next week, I mean, next month, that means that we wouldn't be able to come back to you for two months to ask for your approval if you would like to give it in terms of moving in this direction. And time is of essence, and that you don't have to approve it tonight, but I'd just like to put that out before you to give it some thought as he shares this information. Bill?
Very good. Thank you. With that introduction, the RFP that we sent out really was to take a best practices review of our, our entire IT organization, both from a personnel, from the level of staffing that we have, the infrastructure that we have in place, the way that we go about effectuating changes, the way that we plan our projects, the way that we engage with the community, as well as to understand what the community needs are around technology, to make sure that we're well poised. And to do that in a way that leverages not only the, the input from key stakeholders, from our IT shop, but also from, from industry best practices. And so we asked the four, the firms, and there were four firms that, that bid on this, to get to, to give us their best thinking as to how they would approach the entire project, as well as the best practices part of it. We've asked for a two-month process for this, for this to get done, and really to provide a road, a roadmap of the, of the opportunities that are presented as a result of this. The firm that we're recommending is Campus Works. We asked that all bidders not exceed a budget of $80,000. They all did that, as you've, as you've seen on the, the bid summary sheet. And that we asked that they provide strong background, both from a personnel as well as from a process. Campus Works was chosen be, because from a personnel standpoint, they covered, they covered in a very meaningful way all the key areas within an IT organization. Secondly, their depth from a community college clientele point of view is very, very strong. They all were good, but Campus Works was especially strong. As to their best practices approach, they not only were going to leverage, which they all were, the best practices data that comes from Edu Cause, which has a really rich best practices database to be able to, to refer against. But also that they were going to take the approach of detailing out a questionnaire that they then would take to the leading higher education institutions from a technology operations point of view, and really get firsthand exchange with them around what's working well in this area or that area as another point of input. And then lastly, on the deliverables, they all were gonna provide strong deliverables in terms of the, the opportunities. But we especially liked with Camp, with Campus Works, that they, that they were gonna provide a three-year road, roadmap for us. That, that really was to outline for us those opportunities and those that we were, had the highest risk and thus should be at the front of the curve, and those that had a little bit more time in term, in terms of risk, and maybe a little bit more capital resources or other resources. So a nice road, roadmap for us as well. And this is all to further strengthen our, our IT department. They have done an outstanding job, and even in light of the outage that happened this, this past month, you have, you would have been, and I'm sure you are, very proud of the effort that they put for, you know, for a weak solid. Although the outage was technically only for 48 hours, that's a long time, it impacted classes for yet another day, and then we had two, two days of cleanup, cleanup work on the network activity that was going on, that really was the root cause of this. So our IT team has done and continues to do an excellent job for us. This is about trying to strengthen them. And, and we as an IT team strongly, strongly embrace this, and would very much appreciate your support.
Okay. This, again, is a discussion. Any questions? Yes.
You note that they've got a portfolio of higher education, especially community colleges?
Yes.
Examples of institutions, names we may know?
So they, they've done with a, a number of firms in, on the east, the east coast in Florida, and a, and a few in Michigan. But they're, they're about 100 strong in community colleges. I, I can't think, think of off the top of my head, but I was really impressed with, with the list.
Any other questions? Yes.
I just, I'm, I'm gonna support this. I think they're all very good firms. I just wanna note that the Barry Dunn firm comes in at, oh, $900, $860 less in their bid. And, but I just wanna say that you, whenever these objective assessments are made with these point systems rating things, I always feel like it's objectivity masquerading as, or it's subjectivity masquerading as objectivity. Because, and I just wanna point out, the adequacy and quality of personnel assigned, they all scored eights in the objective points. Campus Works, the one which I'm prepared to support the administration in awarding the contract to, says only to dedicate three staff to project and not able to commit specific individuals. Where Barry Dunn says four staff members with specific general experience will bring in specialists or experts for network and banner. So they'll bring in other experts in areas that they don't cover with their other expert personnel. To me, that's better. You know, that's a better, that's a description of something that's a higher quality commitment to the project, yet they score the same points. It's like, you know, you're scoring points across. They're all good, give them all eight points. But I'm gonna support this. I think it's something we need to do, and as far as I'm concerned, they all look pretty equal to me. And, but I just wanna point out once again, having been involved in some of these point scoring exercises, that frequently, it's not really objective, it's subjective, but you're trying to make it look like an objective measure. But I, I support the administration in this.
Yes.
I'm concerned about the, the team that will be working with this group. It's listed that it'll be staff, the president, the chief financial officer, the college leadership and IT team. You know me, I'm wondering if they're gonna be faculty there, staff here, users, stakeholders, along with this team.
Yes. So that definitely will, will be a strong representation across the campus. That was one of the things we especially liked with Campus Works, that in their bid, in their bid proposal, that they outlined 40 or 50 different kinds of stakeholders, including faculty, that they thought that were critical points of input into their data collection and feedback process.
Okay. I just wanna make sure they were included, because they weren't in the, the background discussion.
Any other questions? Yes.
I'm comfortable with the proposal, I like to move approval
Second.
Campus Works.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. Any further discussion? Okay.
If we include faculty in the discussion, I'll be glad to go with it.
Yes. Thank you for that. Okay. All in favor?
Roll call.
Oh, sorry. Roll call.
Chairman Lee Monahan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fleming?
Yes.
Secretary Alton?
Yes.
Secretary Davis?
Yes.
Trustee Murray?
Yes.
Trustee Gattin?
Yes.
Okay. It has been supported and moved, and the meeting's adjourned.
Well, I move for adjournment of the meeting.
Second.
All support is motion.
All right. It's been moved and supported, all in favor?
All right. All right. Now the move, the meeting is adjourned.